We'll call this meeting to order. Roll call.
McNate.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on agenda items?
None.
Notice of executive session meetings.
The city of Meadville City Council had an executive session today at 5 o'clock for the purposes of real estate and legal affairs.
For 12 minutes, September 3rd, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
Motion. So move second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McNate.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
For 12 minutes, September 10th, 2024, study session minutes. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McNate.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Communications.
We received a letter from Mr. McCrally on September 9th requesting to speak in front of council concerning who is marketing the city of Meadville. He will be able to speak to council, address council at the end of the meeting during public comments.
Great. Managers report.
Couple of items. Rights-to-no requests update 46 rights-to-no requests, $2,700 in fees. General city updates, the city fire department received a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $104,000. This is for the purpose of upgrading their gym and also some more in-depth physicals. So they did receive that. Heidi Cooper Park is coming along. It's almost finished. They should be done laying the foundation or the protective coating on the playground by the end of the week. It's imperative that the public does stay off of that. It needs to cure for 48 hours. So it should be completed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We ask please everybody stay off of it. There is fencing around the swing area and the slide area, but just in case, we ask to stay off of that. As far as after that, we'll have some couple finishing up items to do. The shelter is going to get some TLC. We anticipate though that have a grand opening sometime mid-October for Heidi Cooper. The last update I have is concerning 699 Pine Street and 350 Pine Street. If council recalls, both were subject to fires. 699 Pine Street is now in the blighted property review committee's hands. That will be certified as a blighted property at their October meeting as well as the October meeting of the city planning commission. Once that occurs, they'll move then to the redevelopment authority, who will handle any of the eminent domain actions to take care and finally address that property. 350 Pine Street also subject to fire. That is slated to be demolished next month. The city had no part in the actual demolition of that. That was of the owner's accord.
Old business ordinance versus second reading, beautification committee ordinance. Can I have a motion to approve amendment first reading?
Motion.
I'll second. Discussion.
So this was before council at the study session last week. This is incorporating some of the changes that Peter discussed with council in addition to a change that came at the request of council last week, which was a limit on how many council members could be appointed to the committee. And then that those members appointed to the committee from council or staff would only serve in a temporary capacity until any vacancies are filled. Tim, I sent Tim the draft of that. Still under review, but we can move forward with first and second reading at this time. Peter, do you have anything else to add?
That covers it all.
Does anybody have any questions? Beautification committee has seen these provisions.
I sent it to, yes, I sent them to these, this to them, I think, late last week.
Okay.
And that would have included the changes that we made.
Did you hear anything back? Like dissent?
No.
No dissent?
I hear a thank you.
Great. Roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending Title IX, Article 178, Section 178.02, beautification committee of the Meadville Municipal Code to provide for the continuation of the beautification committee, providing for the beautification committee's purposes, setting the number of its members, their qualifications, and the length of their appointments, providing for the schedule and procedure for member appointments, setting requirements and procedures for its activities and reports to city council, setting requirements and procedures for the maintenance of bylaws, providing for officer and member removals, and providing an effective date, severability, and repealer. McNate.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Can I have a motion to amend second reading?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
McNate.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Ordinance third and final reading, rental inspection ordinance amended. Can I have a motion to amend?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
No changes since the September 3rd meeting where this was discussed. As a reminder, this removed the insurance requirement out of the rental inspection ordinance. We have received correspondence and a signed agreement from Meadville Landlords United. They've signed the agreement and so it is of our opinion that council can move forward with third and final reading and then in new business to approve and authorize signatures on the agreement. A settlement agreement.
Settlement.
Settlement agreement.
For which the city is removing the section which is not material to the ordinance that you're about to vote on right now. That is the extent of our settlement and there with agreeing to withdraw the lawsuit.
Thank you, Tim. Does anybody have any questions? Roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, repealing Article 327.10 of the Meadville Municipal Code pertaining to residential landlord insurance requirements, providing for an effective date, severability, and a repealer. McNate.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Right, new business, discussion. Omnibus zoning amendments. Peter?
Great. So as you may recall, the zoning ordinance was passed this last February. I had given you notice that I'm likely to bring some amendments to the ordinance by the end this, end of this year, given the more that I learn about council's values, how the city develops over the year and everything that we discover within the text that deserves some corrections or changes. This is also something that I think council and Roa has brought up, that there are some inconsistencies that need to be addressed. And with the past discussions on reduction games, outdoor recreation, indoor commercial recreation, I see that there's also room for you to consider more amendments as long as you are asked about the subject, as long as I get your values on them. So I present to you this package of possible amendments for your consideration. There's nothing I'm asking you to consent to about any of them today unless there's something that you see in there that you would really wish to bring up at this meeting. This is a forewarning. I've given this to the planning commission so that they can consider them at least at the October meeting and possibly also again at the November depending on council's pace that they wish to move forward with these amendments. But otherwise, if there's anything that you'd like to land with me about any zoning amendments or subjects that I did not include in there or any subjects that you see that you feel should be stricken from the current discussion, please feel welcome to let me know.
Does anybody have any questions?
Hey, Peter Woods. So you're saying you're not expecting necessarily our detailed discussion and decisions tonight on these items?
It's a lot, so yeah.
What should that look like going forward? Should we do a study session where we dig into these? Should we try to attend the planning commission meeting? Like what would make sense for us to dig in and understand better?
I think that's maybe a question for council to answer. If you would want the planning commission to weigh in first with their recommendations and then council considers those recommendations as a whole or if council wants to make their own recommendations and have those relate to the planning commission for their consideration, might be a little bit backtrack to do it that way. But it's up to council how to proceed.
And because a lot of these are into the weeds and details and could be complicated subjects to approach, again, the invitation is always open if you have any questions or want to land your thoughts with me individually or talk with me in my office about these. I can bring all your individual things back to a future, to the planning commission and to future council meeting.
I think that's definitely appreciated, Peter. I know that, you know, you had set this out and I just like don't have time. And it's just like hard, like weedsy stuff to get into and I was like having to cross. I'm like, do I even have the most updated zoning ordinance? I don't know. And I, I don't know. I feel like for my own understanding and like really getting to, like really being able to comprehend like the meat of it, like sitting in on the planning commission's conversation and like understanding how they're going through it. Or again carving out. So I don't know if that's, if that's a good first step for us to take there. They meet the first Thursday, right?
Yes.
What time do you have?
4:30.
The first Thursday.
And also be aware that the planning commission can have, is free to conduct as much or as little conversations about these as they want to at the meeting, so. No promises. You'll get all the, all the answers at one time that you wish in a single monthly meeting.
So I guess, yeah, I mean to that point too, another option or additionally, do we have a study session agenda lined up for October?
Not yet, no.
So maybe we would consider adding this to the agenda for the 8th and we can, October, begin again.
I know that because I have office hours, I'm able to catch Peter and talk about it. Right, like really ask him questions and begin and that's where I get a lot of, I just appreciate having access, right, to be able to ask you questions and really get your thoughts and brain power on these things. It helps me quite a bit. So I think a study session would probably be best bet to have Peter like give us, you know, and be able to ask you questions that, a little bit of pushback so that we, you know what I mean, can make the best decision possible.
But I might suggest that that be the only item on the study session agenda.
Agree.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Is, do we know the budget calendar yet?
April had hoped to have an initial budget by the October study session date. That's not to say that we can't push that to a different meeting. It will again just be a preliminary. It won't be an in-depth discussion at that point for that November. We typically start the in-depth budget discussion.
And when we're going to get like our agenda for the month and the meetings.
Yeah.
So it would be a discussion and not just like that's the day they hand out the budget book?
Oh, we'll have that, yeah.
Usually it's just like, will they hand us the budget book like at that study session and then? Or whether, like is that what she was thinking?
Yes.
Budget books would come out on that. And normally we have, we have an extra meeting, right, like in November at least for our budget.
Tim, do you think that's too much to do in a day? Get our budget books in.
Getting the budget book isn't discussing the budget.
Which will come, yeah, over the course of the next two months.
If it helps.
Go ahead.
Now, if it helps anybody thoughts to none of these before you or anything that is related to any new development that I'm forewarned of. So there's, there's.
Not urgency.
There's not outside urgency on this, just inner urgency, keep my promises to council.
Sure.
Peter, we haven't printed the zoning ordinance yet, have we? Like in book form?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I just looked online and you're right, if it weren't for my broken foot, but I had this dedicated time that I could go through everything. But still, I felt like a discussion would be good because even though we email back and forth, I still felt like, well, if something is simple, it's like the trash enclosure thing, you know, I still had questions. So I think a study session would be good.
Is this something that we can do the budget as we were thinking April on the 8th and once the budget is done, then reconvene about this? Or is this like what, do you know what I mean, like I'm just?
I would guess that there'd be many discussions about what's proposed in front of you for the zoning. It would not just be a, make all of the decisions after discussion at one meeting.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're giving the time to the budget. We have our books. We are asking questions. Do you know what I mean, like and we're not rushing that?
No, but I mean, questions can we ask as soon as we're handed our.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's also, there's five Tuesdays in October. It's an opportunity to.
Ask more meetings, of course.
And I'm not offended at all whatsoever that out of these 20, you only wish to consider three.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah.
So I could put it strictly as the only agenda item for the October study session. That's not an issue. I guess for Peter's reference and the planning commission, is there any expectation of the planning commission at their October meeting to have comments on these items to bring to council for the council study session? That email I sent, there were things that I felt like that I should have brought. There were some things that I was like, I think the planning, this would be great if they could give us feedback before we discuss. There were like three things and then, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll just send that to Peter.
I think it would make sense. I would, sorry, their meeting is Thursday. We meet Tuesday. That's quick turnaround time. So they'd have to be ready to like have a substantial conversation at their October meeting. Again, I think if any of us can be there, that's helpful. I'm out of doubt, but.
The 3rd, October 3rd. I think I could be there. So can we invite it?
Yeah.
Invite it without like, you know, we would really value their input. But it's not like, I don't know, consequences if they don't get it.
Just so Peter can communicate that with the commission now.
Yeah.
So they have time to look at it and make comments.
Yeah. Procedurally, there's only a requirement that if you consider amendment, you bring it to the planning commission before you adopt it. If it's amendments that they don't prepare themselves.
Hi, Jason.
Hello.
Do you think you can talk about this at your meeting in October?
I think so.
Okay, great. Cool. Great. And has the planning commission, right, I think like they knew some changes were coming and had like some heads up to surface any, any changes they'd want to see too?
Yeah, I forewarned them that a package of amendments will be coming for their consideration. They only got that in this detail last week, I think, early last week. But yeah.
So some of these are coming from the commission? Is that what you're saying?
Only one of them.
Okay.
Is coming directly from the planning commission. Or at least through the planning commission.
Sure.
Similarly, you know, I alerted the environmental advisory committee that we're making. We're considering changes to the zoning ordinance too, so that at their meeting this week, they could talk about any zoning changes that they would recommend.
That's a good idea.
We'll, we'll see if we get any. I can't be surprised, but. I don't know if, yeah, the work of other committees.
All right, does anybody have any more questions on that? And we land on what you needed is we want the.
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Any more questions? Resolution, authorize signatures, settlement agreement, Meadville Landlords United LLC versus city of Meadville, motion to approve amendment, first reading?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Approve the resolution?
Just a resolution, so no readings for this one. It's what Tim recapped, that the settlement agreement is for specifically the removal of the insurance language from the rental inspection.
So do we have any questions on that? Roll call.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a settlement agreement in Meadville Landlords United LLC versus city of Meadville. McNate.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, we have Mr. William McCrawley.
Mayor Kinder. Mr. Rutter. Ms. Mano. Mr. Roma. Mr. McNate. Mr. Lo. Ms. Myers. And sir. Thank you for putting me on this agenda. Oh, Darla, I forgot to say thank you for welcoming me here. I wish to make two observations, one of compassion and the other of concern. This city, Meadville, is merely incredible. Safety is most adequately provided by our police and sheriffs. We boast great public and private schools. As a community, we are most generous and caring. I counted 100 local charities on the list of Crawford gives. Over $900,000 was raised this year. It occurs to me that once these gifts are received by these charities, schools, libraries, they will in some cases come back to requesting more grants, additional gifts. These grants, in some cases, are drawn from charitable foundations and others are drawn from Pennsylvania's collective taxes. This brings me to my second observation, an immediate concern. Meadville is shrinking. When my wife Nancy and I arrived from Reno, Nevada in November of '21, I talked to Siri, said, what's the population of this town? She said 12,500. Now, probably less. We learned also that more than 60% of the homes here are rentals. Thus, if the town is shrinking and the gifting and care of the disadvantaged is huge, where is the money, where is the money going to come from to support the town's needs? Where is the money to come from a shrinking tax base? What is being done? To promote this town, to attract folks to the greatest place in Pennsylvania, what are we doing to encourage people to live here and raise their families? What is being done to keep the graduating students from high school and college to remain here? There are plenty of help wanted signs. What? What are we doing to attract outsiders to bring their families to support our local and county industries? I humbly ask your guidance. Not just now, not this evening, but for tomorrow and for as long as it takes. This is the perfect place to raising one's families. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. It's really beautiful. We got this place too, right? So much. All right, is that the only?
That is all.
Right on. So we'll move on to council member statements. Jim?
Thank you. Just a short observation. Linden Street, Park Avenue, and the French Creek Parkway. The traffic lights are automatically controlled, but there are a number of times when there's practically gridlock down there. Don't know if we can have the lights reprogrammed or if that's not a possibility to ease congestion. I mean, we call it Linden Street, but really it's Route 322. And there's always a healthy flow of traffic there. That's all.
Thanks, Jim.
Oh, I've had a long day, so I have nothing. Thank you to six, thank you to staff as always.
Larry?
I just thank everyone for coming and good to see our past city council young man here. Hopefully we'll see you again this school year.
Hopefully, fingers crossed.
Right on.
Yeah, yeah, echo. Thanks, thanks for coming tonight, folks. It's always good to see some, some people here and thanks for coming and for sharing your thoughts. As the mayor said, we all love this place a lot and yeah, I'm glad that you have relocated here. That's, that's a start, right? Like that helps. Also really glad for and grateful for the beautiful community events that happened this weekend that make this place one people want to be in. Second Saturday Community Market, we celebrate the end of the market season. And that was wonderful. The Saturday, the farmer's market was, was great on Saturday too. There's more farmers, there's more fruit. Haggis Orchard is back this day. Voodoo had a, had a big vendor fair too, which, and a car show. So there was a lot going in town, on in town on Saturday and that was, that was exciting to see. It was a lot of fun. It was a great day. And yeah, I'm also, I'm also hopeful we can get our junior council person program back up in the running. So thanks for continuing. I'm glad that you're here, sticking it out. So yeah, that's it for me. Thanks for being here. Thanks to staff.
Thanks, Autumn. First, I just want to thank the people that I get to serve with and the staff because, you know, as we see, we have come to the other side of our, you know, our rental licensing program. And I want to thank you guys for being brave and courageous and sticking with your values. I believe that, right, this is the best thing for our town. And nobody, I don't think, right, I think we can dispute this, but arguably, I believe Meadville is the most magical place on the planet and I don't think anybody believes that more than I do, I think, right? I think that's because my mom was here, so. But I just, I just believe this place can be the best place on the planet. And I think that the people up here and the people who work for Meadville and the people who, who live in this town understand that a town is only as good as its people and how much we care about each other, right? And that's what makes Meadville so special, the people who live here and the people who care about each other. So I just really am blessed and feel, I just feel so honored to be at this table with you guys.
Likewise.
So, and, and we had some great events, right? So, uh, and, and we had some great events, right, uh, last weekend and some more this weekend, right? Like some, some beautiful events, there's a veteran event this weekend, um, Friday night, Candlelight Vigil, and then they have a motorcycle ride and they'll be in the park again, uh, on Saturday. Um, I just believe that we should all come out and support the veterans, right? Um, I believe that, uh, you know, they've given a lot and, you know, it's our obligation to give back because they love this place too. So, uh, hopefully I'll see everybody there and, uh, with that, I'm just gonna, you know, say thanks for being in this place with me and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.